Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
D'Zio.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
All right, so we're really here for just one thing is to discuss the options for work that's going to be done on the 11th Street Bridge. And before we get started with the actual public hearing, I think our engineer, Dean Chamberlain, has a brief comment he'd like to make.
Sorry, that's kind of an awkward introduction. I feel like the walk of shame here. So before we want to get started with the public hearing, because we know that a lot of you here tonight talked about option three in particular with the neighborhood. A few things that have come up since last week's meeting is we found out a couple important things from the Wisconsin DOT and Wisconsin DNR that I just wanted to quick go over because it affects essentially the viability of option three. First thing is that the Wisconsin DOT essentially told us, so on I-94, right where that bridge would cross over, Wisconsin DOT has, back in 2018 when they did their last project through there, they installed the ability to remove that median so that you can cross over, you know, excuse me, if the river bridge was closed on one side for construction or something like that. So they have a median that they can remove there. If you plop a bridge pier, you know, in that removable median, it kind of defeats the purpose. So we'd have to move that somewhere else and that cost would be on us to do with this project if we did so. So that adds a significant price tag onto that option of about three quarters of a million dollars, I'm estimating. The second thing is that we've been talking with the Wisconsin DNR about, actually, they contacted us about the Riverway area with how this incorporates any of the options, but in particular, option three, adding a new bridge, how that affects the Riverway designation and all that good stuff. Just going back and forth with them, it sounds like we'd likely need to pursue a variance for slope preservation purposes for that if we move forward with option three. So that just, I mean, it introduces potential for setbacks, I guess, in the process of pursuing option three. So with those two things, staff feel a little more hesitant about pursuing option three because of those things, both increasing the cost and just the more red tape, I guess, to go through with that. So it's technically still feasible, but it seems like, the more we look into it, it's a little bit harder than we thought initially. Thanks.
Thanks, Dean. All right, so this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for everybody here and on Zoom to, if you have any comments you'd like to make about the three options, maybe down to two, but this is why we're here, is to discuss the options for the 11th Street Bridge. Please, if you would, keep your comments as short as possible. I'm sure that people would be repetitious with some of the comments. Please try to keep the repetition down. We understand that. We can always ask people if you agree with that and want to say the same thing. But again, try to keep it short, try not to repeat, and we are accepting testimony from residents only. So if you could, when you get up to speak or if you're zooming in, if you could identify yourself and where you live, please, I would appreciate it. So having said that, is there anyone who'd like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Come on up. Again, if you would, please identify yourself. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and honorable mayor. My name is Jim Houston. I've been a resident here in Hudson for over 26 years, and I live at 1118 Crestview Drive up on the Bluff. And I have a number of bullet points to go over with you, but primarily they fall under four: due diligence, safety, property values, and of course, what's best for Hudson and all of its residents. In the handout that I gave, and I can make additional copies for any of the audience that wants to ask, and I'll be happy to get them to you. There's also an attached page that addresses a little bit about what Dean referred to as far as the DNR. I had some conversations also recently with the DNR, and not the first time that I've had conversations with them regarding potential improvements within the city of Hudson and how it affects Crestview Drive. But first of all, I wanted to suggest and actually request of all of the council members and Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure, yourself, we've never met and haven't had the opportunity to know each other, that as part of your due diligence in getting not only the most information, but the best information available so that you all can make the best decision in regard to whatever option you decide to move forward with on behalf of the city and the residents of Hudson, that as part of that due diligence, I wanted to ask you to raise a hand and just put you on the spot for a second. How many of you all have ever been up on Crestview Drive and into our neighborhood? So an opportunity for at least two of the council members to come take a look. We're one of Hudson's oldest and original, most beautiful and desired developments, literally on the Bluff overlooking the St. Croix River. Our development's complete with a one-acre park, tennis courts, playground for our neighborhood children, and a separate stunning bluff overlook walkway with an adjacent seating area. You know, that probably sounds like a listing sheet description and it may be stuck in my mind from 26 years ago because we fell in love with that neighborhood, my wife and I, when we first moved up there. All of that is accessible, and this is the main point I wanted to make, even though Dean has mentioned that option three has become less desirable possibly at this point in time. But all of our neighborhood is connected by a walking path, combination of sidewalks and blacktop, that takes you in an entire one-mile loop around the Crestview neighborhood and Hazelcrest. It literally connects Hagan Street and Crestview Drive with our entire neighborhood. That paved walking path, for those of you who've been familiar, or even if you ever just go to the post office, you'll see, literally starts and ends arguably right there at the intersection of Crestview and Hagan. So I think that's important to keep in mind. Knowing that, one of the points I wanted to make was item number two. Crestview Drive is literally, probably without a doubt, one of the longest cul-de-sacs within the city of Hudson proper. We are actually on a cul-de-sac, so you cannot get through to the other side. Knowing that, we have a lot of people in the neighborhood that use the walking path, not just neighbors and families with kids and strollers, senior citizens from the Prairie Point senior condos, the Comfort of Home staff and residents often walk on that path. And I know that because I actually put in a little free library a couple of years ago, particularly for the senior citizens and the neighbors' families with kids, and it gets a lot of use. And I have a bench there that I actually am never surprised to pull in my driveway and see some of these senior citizens sitting there reading books or just taking a break from walking the walking path. So that walking path is used by everybody for walking, jogging, riding bicycles. We oftentimes, even in the warm weather, have professional 10-speed bicycle clubs that will ride that section of Crestview Drive because it's literally so protected and has such low traffic flow through the neighborhood. One of the big concerns under safety that I have is, and when you come up to see in the neighborhood, the sidewalk is only on the east side of our stretch on Crestview Drive. And that sidewalk literally ends at the beginning of the hill and slope that goes down from Crestview to the intersection at Hagan Street. That stretch of approximately a block and a half to two blocks, there is no sidewalk. So walkers, people pushing strollers, anyone from senior citizens to the 10-speed bicycle groups that ride through the neighborhood have to be out in the road on Crestview Drive through that stretch. Safety becomes a major concern in my mind, and hopefully yours, if option three were to come to fruition and the bridge landing would be right there at the start of the slope. All of those people would be exposed to the additional traffic then that would be coming across that bridge onto Crestview Drive. One of my other major concerns is the potential impact, negative impact, that building that bridge could have on our property values. As I said, I've been a resident in the city of Hudson for 26 years, consider myself fortunate to live on the Bluff, and now retired as a number of the other people in our neighborhood on Crestview Drive are. And I've always enjoyed the beauty, peace, and tranquility of our neighborhood. One of the questions I would ask the city council and Mr. Mayor is the potential negative effects that building that bridge and potentially any of the improvements that you may be considering might have in negatively affecting our property values. To give you an idea, just on that stretch of Crestview, typical homes' value are from $500,000 to over $1 million. Assuming even a minor negative impact of 5%, that could mean a loss of $25,000 to $50,000 on our property value on those individual homes. And that's something I would hope you'd seriously take into consideration. Last but not least, of course, the most important point is for you to have to decide what's best for all of the city of Hudson residents. But I would ask you this one question. What would each of you do individually if you were presented with the possibility that an interstate highway bridge was going to be built and literally be right at the entrance to your neighborhood? That's a major concern for all of us on Crestview as well as Hazelcrest. Since Dean already talked about some of the DNR contact, I will just mention that none of the neighbors always ask about the federal Wild and Scenic River Act and how it affects our neighborhood potentially since we're on the Bluff. It sounds as if it's going to have an effect beyond what I first thought and impacted, but you'll see in the notes that I left you, the ranking of priority as far as authority starts at the federal government level, goes down to the state to administer between Minnesota and Wisconsin, and then to the local municipalities, including Hudson. So I would just ask that the city council assure appropriate application of Hudson's Riverway zoning ordinance if it's determined that it does apply. It sounds like from the comments, Dean may that perhaps it does. But in particular, to option three and any of the bridge improvements, that you take into account, it may have potential negative impacts on our beautiful river and the Riverway that we've grown to love here in Hudson. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jim. Any other comments? Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Chip Anderson. I live in Colonial Hills condominiums, which are right on 11th and Cooley. And we as an association feel that unfortunately, the third option is the best for us, and we think it's the best of all. Number one, it's the only one that takes traffic away from Cooley and 11th, which is, like you said, that's the second busiest bridge in the state of Wisconsin. And we believe that would be a big benefit of the third one. Number two, it gives a third option of crossing the river, and we believe that is a significant benefit. Third, it gives you the option of not disrupting traffic during the construction process. And, you know, that's six months or if there's delays, how long is that going to be of closures and significant constrictions of, again, the second busiest bridge of its type? Third, I think at first it was cheaper, so I was thinking that with that savings, you could address some of the concerns that we've heard. You could address some of the pedestrian bike concerns of the 11th Street Bridge, and you could also, they were talking building the roundabout at the south end of the bridge. And for the concerns of the Erickson Bluff area, it seems that that option would be a benefit to them because it would take their road to make it more private because it would be a special turn-on instead of just a continuation straight of Crestview. And also, the third bridge would have significant pedestrian access on it. According to the design, I had the impression. And so that would be, again, tie into the pathways in their neighborhood and would eliminate that on the street walking. And let's see. So, and also, the last one, people made comments at the meeting that I was at, was that doing the third one leaves open the option of later on, if we need to do the one or two, it would make that project much easier, plus waiting for it. Maybe the city, I mean, the state of Wisconsin would be more inclined to be the primary rebuilder of the 11th Street Bridge. And so those were our issues and concerns.
Thanks. Thanks, Chip. Any other comments? Ryan?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Carey-Haywood-Kearney Anderson. I'm here representing the Baki family who owns 905 Cooley Road. And if the... Considering option three here, they own the apartment complex, right here at 20 Unit Apartment Complex where the proposed option would delve back on Cooley. We're here to voice some opposition to option three. The first concern we have is just with regard to the process. In the memo attached to the agenda packet, it references there have been two informational meetings that have occurred, the first of which was apparently with affected landowners. My client received no notice or invitation to attend that meeting, and so has been trying to get up to speed to determine, get their arms around the options and to fully understand them. So that's one obvious area of concern for us in the lack of notice and be able to take part in those meetings. Secondly, if you look at option three relative to my client's property, it appears as though that option would contemplate a taking of some of their property. Looks like there would be some parking lot taken, potentially some green space taken, and we're unsure as to the amount of property would be taken, and then the plan for replacing the six or so parking spots that would no longer be present. Again, if I hadn't mentioned it, there are 20 units in that building, a combination of one and two bedroom units, so between 30 and 40 residents living onsite there. Third, if you, obviously looking at that plan, option three, the sightlines, the car traffic for at least a couple hundred, if not more, feet would be pointed directly at my client's apartment complex. Sightlines are a serious concern for them. It contemplates taking property, not sure how you'd be able to take the property for use for the project, and also be able to offer enough buffer area for screening from the headlights at night. That's a major concern for my client as well. In response to the mayor's comment about not being redundant here, I won't get into it in detail, but the obvious concerns we have are about dealing with the DNR. If we are in somewhat of a, I want to say a rush, but it appears like we're in a rush to be choosing an option that's going to be viable, we want to choose one that would have, I think we'd want to choose with the least amount of roadblocks or potential roadblocks. And the DNR issue is certainly, I think, a cause for concern. And then finally, I don't know that this is necessarily related, but I think it could be, and that is that there have, it's my understanding there's been some talk about reopening the former, the old slip ramp that would come off, headed eastbound on 94 that would have dumped into the Dominion Drive, Old Hudson House area. And I think that if we're going to consider any of these options, especially option three, there should be some consideration given to see if that has any impact on either or any of the options, excuse me. So I want to conclude by saying, despite our opposition to option three, I want to commend the council and Mr. Mayor and staff for addressing the issue because I do think something needs to be done there. We just respectfully think that option three is, of all the options, being considered the one that should be considered last. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So I just would like to make one comment so that we don't go down this road is, sorry about that. That was kind of unintended. But there is no discussion about that slip ramp with the DOT right now. We would love to see that happen. We've brought it up to them, but they are not considering that at all. It's off the table completely. So, but thank you for bringing that up because we always like to bring those comments to the DOT. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, come on up. And I also, do we have anybody on Zoom? Who's running Zoom here? Is it Ryan?
Yeah, there's a few people on here, so I know that we have, one of them has their hand up, so I was figuring if you get through the people in the room, I'll start going through the ones on Zoom and let you know about those.
All right, sounds good, Aaron. Thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Cindy O'Brien. I live at 1852 Hinsdale Circle, and I am in support of option three. It seems to me that having an additional bridge just makes sense in terms of having, splitting up some of the volume of the traffic in that area. And then if the Wisconsin DOT will be replacing the existing bridge in a period of time, it seems like a good fiscal decision. But I'd also like to have you consider if that is not an option and you're reworking that intersection for option one or option two, that it's really walker and bicycle unfriendly. I walk to the post office in downtown pretty regularly, and I come from the fire station, and I can walk along Ward Avenue until 13th Street, and then I have to get onto Cooley Avenue in order to get to that intersection. And I'm on, it's horrible. There's no way for me to walk, and when I look at your scheme, it doesn't look like the walkway extends to 13th Street. And then if I'm crossing, if I'm crossing, going north on 11th Street, instead, I can make a little longer route, but there's only a very brief sidewalk where the townhomes are or the condos are. And then I have to either cross to the side of the road where there is, you know, there's a yellow line on the side of the road, or I continue on 11th Street in the road again. So extending those to a place where I can turn off and get into a residential street is what I would ask you look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Grady Erickson, 1003 Crestview Drive. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members for pausing the decision. And I know there is a little bit of a rush, as Mr. Carey said, but I don't think any of these decisions are worth rushing for grant money. I think there's a process that needs to play out and hear all of what we have to say. That being said, I have a whole lot of reasons opposed to number three, but I'm not going to reiterate what's already been said. I think Mr. Houston and Mr. Carey did a good job of summarizing. But again, I just want to thank you guys for holding off on your decision to hear what we had to say. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Grady. Any other comments? Any other comments?
Hi, guys. I'm honestly, I'm with Ryan Carey. I'm actually the owner at 905 Cooley Road. My name is Brett Baki. My family's owned that place for, give or take, 35 years-ish. And honestly, a ton of things have been said, and a lot of things are going to be reiterated, so I'll try to keep away from all those. The one thing that honestly hasn't been taken into consideration is the intersections and all that stuff and the danger of those. You're adding a bunch of things in with number three. If I can sneak around on this side. Honestly, with this turn in itself, there's been at least 10 accidents in the last 10 years before he jumped me saying that, you know, it's a dangerous turn. It's actually slowing people down enough. We've had fatalities with somebody hitting the post on the manhole cover or whatever it is over there. We've actually had another one drop down onto the freeway. I've had two people hit trees right here. I've had somebody climb a telephone pole right here. A tree was hit here, and three people have taken out the railing. And now you're adding a straightaway with a little bit of a kink to it. This is telling me there's going to be a head-on collision at some point because the straightaway, you're going to add speed to it. I mean, it's just, people go fast up that road as is. It's just, I live and work there. I don't live there, but I've worked there on a very regular basis. And I'm very concerned with this little turn here, you're going to have a head-on collision going straight across. And then you also have, now, my intersection's not here anymore, right about here, and you're just going to have a whole bunch of, just a whole confusion on that general area. And I'm very concerned about the safety of the cars coming at you. Other than that, I mean, it's just, pretty much everything has been said, and you're not really making the walkway safe on 11th. If you're taking a walk from, we'll say, the post office to EP Rock where all those kids go to school, you have to go across. You're not going to take a family down the hill to go up the hill. The kids are going to scream like crazy. I know that from experience. So with that said, that's all I got for you. Have a wonderful night. Thank you for taking the time.
Yeah, thanks, Brett. Any other comments? Aaron, you got somebody there?
Yep, there's Ryan, I think, Bruski.
Bruski, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Aaron and Mr. Mayor. I'm at 1313 Hazelcrest, and I can turn on my cameras if those. And, you know, I understand the complications with the third option. One thing I, you know, as a parent with young children, I would like to just put into all the options. I think the pedestrian flow on both sides of the bridge is very problematic, as been mentioned. But there's another element that hasn't been brought up is that that bridge has recently, in the last few years, been used more and more by protesters, and it becomes basically impassable. So if you have young children, you know, you've got strollers, small bicycles, that whole area gets extremely congested. So whatever happens with the bridge, I would hope that pedestrian traffic flow is better between the neighborhoods across the bridge and that there is, you know, less barriers. And I mean that both in a physical sense of the word, but also just make it easier. So for example, the bridge, there's a large, it's probably like a foot tall, it seems like elevation change, and if you're on a small bicycle or if you have, you know, a carrier in the back, it's basically impossible. So I think what I'd like to see with any of these plans is that they consider the surrounding neighborhoods. So one of my neighbors mentioned that going up the hill, there is no way to not be in the road. So, you know, with the young kids, I would like to see some dedicated pedestrian path that's clearly out of traffic going up the hill. And similarly, on the other side by Taco John's, if you've ever tried to weave your way through between the sidewalk and there's a little road, I mean, it's just, it's extremely dangerous, and I would never let my young children go in any directions without a parent. And I understand that isn't the purpose of this project per se, but I would say it's very valuable for me to be able to, you know, interact with the rest of downtown. I would say that looking at option three, aside from the negatives of dealing with the state, the bureaucracy, you know, there's a potential positive that could come out of that that I don't think has been brought up yet, and that is that there's a lot of echoing zones that come out of that cavernous area. And if there's any part of it that was broken up by any additional covering of the freeway, I think that would help tremendously with the echo and the reverberations that kind of go into the neighborhoods. The other benefit to see with option three is that there could potentially be less traffic in the neighborhoods. So as I'm traveling across the bridge, heading northbound, if there's a backup in the lane to go downtown, I'll often actually go through the neighborhoods and then kind of lead my way to get downtown. And I appreciate that residents in that neighborhood don't want traffic that's meant for downtown. So if there's anything we can be done to reroute the existing traffic out of the neighborhoods with any of the options, I think that's something that we should all consider. That's all I got.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
Anybody else on Zoom, Aaron?
I don't see any hands up, but there's a few people on, so if you are on Zoom and would like to comment, please unmute and... would like to comment, please unmute and do that.
No?
I don't think so.
Anybody else here like to make a comment?
I could make one more.
Sure, Chip.
I'd like to bring up the one and two. We're concerned at Colonial Hills that you'll have to take more property from us, and ten years ago when they expanded that Eleventh Street, an extra lane on Eleventh Street, we cooperated fully and lost a tree and lost three parking spots and also moved traffic closer to our building. So, it seems that the roundabout is going to really take some land and put it right against our building, and also maybe one will also affect us in that way. That's another reason why we like the third option. And also, it wouldn't affect an increase in traffic on Cooley Road going down towards downtown Hudson, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Aaron, go ahead.
Chip, sorry. Paul Zito from District Three. If between one and two, if you had a preference for Colonial Hills, what would it be? If three wasn't done, but one or two had to be done, what would be your preference? Two is the, two is roundabout, one is the?
Yeah, we're really concerned that the roundabout is really going to take a big chunk of our land, and if you have to take almost any of our places, we'll really have to consider you buying part of our building because the one unit will be unlivable and the one building will be right there in a super busy intersection. So, I suppose number one would be.
Comparable?
Yeah, since, on the main concern that it wouldn't be, it would potentially take less land from us.
Thanks, Chip.
Thanks, Chip.
Ruth Peterson, I live at Colonial Hills also. To take on to Chip, too, I'm kind of like the option one better than two because of the land that would possibly be taken from our property, and our house values would go down also along with the ones up on Number Three. And on a roundabout, and because you're going to be working on the Carmichael Bridge in the future, you put a roundabout there, that's going to pull more traffic to that Eleventh Street area, and it's already a hard time to get out of our condo area, Taco John's, RJ's, whoever's up there in that corner, the traffic is just going to be going faster and faster, well, more traffic, it's not going to go faster, then again, who knows? So, it's going to be just really hard for anybody to get in and out. You know, if we had an emergency, what do we do there? Wait for the fire truck? Wait for the policeman? What do we do? And I think Taco John's and RJ's would probably feel the same way because we talked about this at one of the first meetings on those driveways. So, I'm just considering and concerned about the safety in that area on a roundabout because of the more traffic that would be going around that with, working on the Carmichael Bridge. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Any other comments? We got, Jim, we got somebody behind you that hasn't spoken yet.
My name's Dave Cohoy. I live in Hudson. My only question, and I know Dean addressed it a little bit, talking about how easy it is for pedestrians to walk across a roundabout, but I'd like to hear more about how pedestrians can get, pedestrians and bikers can get around roundabouts. Meaning, if I'm a pedestrian walking along, I push the button, it says, "Traffic stop", and you stopped all the traffic going in the circle because you've got to wait for people to walk across it. I can't see where a roundabout would be any better for pedestrians and bicycles especially, if you have that stop light and the concrete medians to walk by and all that kind of stuff. And if you're going to have pedestrians, you've got to have the light to stop the traffic. You can't, you can't say, "Be careful." Can't do that with kids. So, I, I think everybody knows, I'm in favor of Option Three, just if that, if that makes any difference now. Thank you.
Thanks.
One other comment, Mr. Mayor and all your people, just to share with you, I hadn't thought of it earlier, but play devil's advocate maybe for a second on behalf of all of us, Mayor, City Council, and the residents. In my conversations with Dean Baumann and Liz Usborn at the Wisconsin DNR, they're in the Eau Claire Regional Office, and they have immediate oversight as far as the St. Croix River and the Wild and Scenic River Act. He shared one observation with me and suggested I make sure that the City Council and the Mayor are aware of this, and perhaps you are, but allow me to bring it up for you. He had mentioned that in their position, they often have to submit proposals for federal grant monies for various DNR projects. And his point was that oftentimes in the rush and haste to meet deadlines for budget proposal requests, that after the fact, they very often are able to modify and change actual proposed action plans and development once the monies have been approved, and that a lot of that time it involved getting to the office of Senator Ron Johnson and Senator Tammy Baldwin in terms of our federal representation for those monies that may be available by the New Infrastructure Act. So, I didn't know if the City Council, Mr. Mayor, if you're aware of that or not, but that's coming from our own Wisconsin DNR, which somewhat reassured me that even in a haste to try to get an option selected and submitted, it sounds like there may be the opportunity to make modifications and changes after the fact. So, I was a little more reassured when I heard that myself. In other words, that we may not necessarily, and I don't know if you know, Mr. Mayor, to put you on the spot, if once an option is selected, if it's hard and fast that we're required as citizens in our local Hudson government to go with that option unchanged, it sounds like there may be some flexibility, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Jim. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Aaron, anything?
Nope, nothing else here.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, public hearing is closed. I want to thank everybody for that was here to participate in that. What's your pleasure, council? Where would you like to go?
Well, I guess I'm at this point where I feel like, I think we should do our due diligence, excuse me. I'd like to take more time to really think this through well. I'm not here to really make a proposal or decision or a vote on a particular design tonight. I think it would behoove us to continue conversing with citizens, to continue to think things through, and then come back next Monday and try to see if we can maybe push it toward that.
Okay. So, everybody hear that? That's, Paul, let me ask this. And I don't know, Dean, you or Mike, I guess, who, the grant application. So, we do, do we need to, this is what I heard at the last meeting, is that we needed to make a decision at the last meeting, or should have, which we did, to be able to proceed with the grant application, but by March seventh, we should have an option chosen. Is that correct?
Yes. So, the grant application that we are looking into for this project would be the federal raise grant, and the grants that we often pursue are different than the ones that the DNR pursues in some ways. They're different agencies, different whatever involved. The guidance that we've always been given is that in order to have an application that you're going to put forward for construction of a project, you have to know what the project is going to look like. You can change some of the details, you can change, you can tweak the geometry a little bit, you can, if we went with Option Three, you could skew the bridge a little bit more or less, or, you know, that kind of thing. You could make the roundabout a little bigger, a little narrower, like that kind of stuff, but the big picture stuff is stuff that we need to nail down so that we can have that grant done.
So, those tweaks that can be made, can they be wholesale changes, like moving between Option One to Option Three or Option Three to Option Two?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
I will interject that when we did Wisconsin Street with the federal grants, we were able to do some changes on particular things, but not major shift from three to one option.
No bridge to a bridge.
Yeah.
Bit much.
Wisconsin Street is also a different program, too, and different programs are more flexible. That one, I believe, is the L.RIP program, and that's the one that we did for Vine Street as well. That one's a little bit more flexible than the ones that we're looking for. The bigger the grant, you know, the more competitive the grant program, then the more that they want you to make sure you got your narrative down, essentially to sell your project.
But it's eighty-twenty, isn't it, Dean?
Yep.
So, any changes would be on our dime, more or less.
Right.
You can always add things to it that, like you said, that would be on your dime, but you should have the scope or the, more or less what you're doing with this project decided before you put that grant application in.
Okay. Thanks, Dean. All right, so Paul suggesting that we hold off, take some more time to do our due diligence. Any other comments on that?
I'm not opposed to it, but I actually wonder if we should just lay the Option Three on the table and move forward with one and two. And that is a motion, if there's a second.
What's the motion? That we?
Lay an Option Three.
Table, Option Three.
Drop three, drop Option Three, and then go with either one or two. I guess before we do that, I would really like to just find out where everybody's at. Randy, what's your preferred option?
A modified Number One. I still don't, this new stuff that I requested, Dean, from last week, it doesn't modify what I was kind of asking for, for a hybrid looking plan. It just doesn't do it, and I don't know if it addresses a safety issue enough, and that was my concern all along, the last six years I've been bringing this up, is the safety of getting people across the highway, at both intersections and including the bridge. And that bridge is, you know, who, I don't know who said it, but there's like a footstep up. I don't know what they're trying to accomplish there.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But I know it probably wasn't meant for foot traffic at the time. So, I don't see that. I don't see any pencil sharpening on trying to make it a lot safer and a little wider without incurring people's land and that kind of thing.
Yeah, if I could put a little bit into that in regards to the people's land part, after our meeting last week, you know, there was the concerns from, especially the condo association people in regards to the right-of-way issues with their corner there. Following our meeting last week, I asked our design consultants to shift the north roundabout south a bit to alleviate.
Is that a showing?
It's.
You see it?
Yep. Sorry, north is up there. To take away more of that impact to their property. So, if you, if you look at their corner up here.
Colonial.
Colonial right up here. That edge of that sidewalk right there is right where the existing white fence is.
So, it's the same, it's not moved, no, so you took, so you are taking some land.
It's a little bit, I don't know exactly where your line is in here, but it's, if we're staying inside, so to speak, where we are right now, that significantly reduces the impact to that property there. So, we did make that change.
Well, it might significantly reduce it for you on paper, but for those folks, it's encroaching on their land. They're saying it's not working. It wouldn't work, I should say.
Well, I'm saying, well, we tweaked it so that it makes it a lot better than what we had shown before. Yeah, yep. Option One, I mean, is pretty much the same as we had it before, but I just wanted to point that out. So, I had sent you guys also an email, or a couple of emails about some comments based on, you know, last time's discussion. If you want me to, I can read those into the record, so to speak, for the benefit of people here, otherwise, I can certainly take any more questions or whatnot, but.
Well, first, we do have a motion on the floor.
Yep.
So, is there, is there a second to the motion? Randy, you want to repeat?
The motion was that I would, we would lay on the table, Option Three, not discounting it completely, and then move forward on a better timeframe for one and two.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, discussion. Joyce, did you want to continue on here?
Yeah, so Bill, what are you leaning towards? Do you have a preference yet?
In taking a look at, you know, and hearing certainly what Dean put forward this morning, this afternoon, I'm leaning more towards either one or two. I'm still not completely ruling two out in terms of the roundabout. It depends on, again, that land space, land use. But I have a lot of concerns around building, like I said in the last meeting, building another, an additional bridge when, I mean, I don't know what types of data has come back, but just driving that at peak hours and seeing everybody in the right lane, turning right, I don't know that it solves one hundred percent the issue. So, that's kind of why, that's why I seconded Randy's motion there.
Okay, thanks. Paul?
Well, I guess, you know, I spoke last meeting about, I thought Option Three would be something to, you know, that could be positive for the city overall. I have more concerns tonight just based on the DNR piece and the red tape piece. I guess I don't know the timing in terms of, we may not have time to do Option Three, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at, because it sounds like if we want to get the federal infrastructure money by the time we got some of these other agencies lined up, we might not just have time. I'll throw out just a curveball, though. Something I was thinking about today was, I'd be curious to see what, if we went with Option Three and did a one-way traffic, north on the existing Eleventh Street Bridge and south on Option Three, what that would do in terms of crossing for public safety for bikes. You could really create some better ways of crossing, probably on both bridges. So, I would love to see something that, a scheme or something, what would that look like? We don't, I don't know all the traffic counts, all the details. I mean, I appreciate the Crestview neighborhood being here tonight. I don't think Option Three actually is going to have a ton of impact because it's not, the neighborhood is up the hill from that intersection. So, the walking I'm hearing you on, I'm hearing you on the property values, but honestly, most of us just live in towns. I live on a busy corner in Hudson, and cars go by me all the time, so there's a sense that most of that would be rerouted, I think, right downtown. But I'm just curious about the one-way, just as a creative outlet. I have concerns about Option Two. In general, I like roundabouts. My concern about Option Two is that I just am still leery about enough space there, and I've been going door-to-door campaigning, and a lot of people, older people, they're concerned about roundabouts. Younger people don't seem to mind them. Younger people, I think, are more apt to, you know, try them, but I know older people in some of those neighborhoods I've talked to are concerned about roundabouts. And I'm concerned about Colonial Hills and Taco John's losing that space as well to a potential roundabout. So, I'm still of the idea of why not keep working and thinking about all three? I would love to hear from the folks here tonight. If you got what you wanted, if there was no Option Three, I'd love to hear from the Crestview people, what do you like, Option One or Two? I would love to hear from nine oh five Cooley. If we don't go with Option Three, what do you think about one or two? I would like to hear from Colonial Hills folks. If you don't get Option Three, you know, one or two, we heard a little bit about that tonight. So, I just think it's easy to be concerned about something and against something, which I totally get, but I want to challenge the public, not just folks here, but other public to weigh in and say, this week, we got a week to email your council reps and say, here's why I like one, here's why I like two, here's why I like three, and look at it from a more positive frame of mind to say, what's good for the future of Hudson? So, I'm not sold on any of the options right now, but those are just some of the thoughts that are going through my head.
Thanks, Paul. Sarah? Sarah?
You know, I, I'm struggling as well. I wanted to, um, see if we could get, um, Dean's professional opinion. When I think about the issues we're hearing tonight, we've heard a lot about pedestrians and bikes and safety. And, um, knowing that our city is becoming far more focused on walkability and pedestrian traffic, which from his professional opinion is the safest. We know we have a lot of kids crossing potentially, or, or using that area for school. Seniors, we know our population is aging and, and choosing to age in place. You know, what is our safest option? That's, that's what I really would like to hear from, from Dean if I could.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I've kind of alluded to this before, uh, with some comments I've made and, and other questions or whatnot. But I believe that option two is going to be the safest for everybody involved. Um, the, uh, there was a comment tonight about, uh, pedestrians, how they, and bicyclists, how they cross the roundabouts. Um, I don't know if, uh, there may have been some confusion. You're not going to have a roundabout with a traffic signal controlling, you know, how you're crossing there. It's, it's essentially like a striped crosswalk, um, instead. So with a roundabout, I'll, I'll tackle pedestrian bicycle stuff first. So, let me come over here. Maybe easiest to show here. So with a roundabout, the nice thing about roundabouts for pedestrian bicycle safety is that I didn't allude to this in the last meeting, is that you only cross one lane at a time, or one direction at a time essentially. So, and then with the roundabout, pedestrians always technically legally have the right of way. I know not everybody, you know, adheres to that, but they do legally have the right of way all the time. One thing that, uh, so say if you're crossing from here, try to get the other side of the street. What you do first, you approach the intersection.
Dean, can you move the mic closer to your, your, um, body?
Well, and the, and the
Yeah.
Visual feed is not coming up to the audience.
Gotcha. Okay. See how to do this best thing. Okay, so say you're trying to cross the roundabout here, uh, down at Hagan Street by the post office. First, what you do is approach the intersection, look to your left. If there's nobody coming, uh, you can cross to the median. If there is somebody coming and you don't think they're going to stop, wait there until that person goes by, then you can cross to the median. When you're on, when you're in the median, you do the same, except for you look the other direction, right? You only have to cross one direction of traffic at a time. That's the great thing about roundabouts. And also, well, and for pedestrians also, people in, in the roundabout are forced to slow down to fifteen to twenty miles per hour because of the geometry of the roundabout. So people are approaching or leaving the roundabout, they should be going a lot slower than, than other cases. Uh, so that's how you cross a roundabout, on foot or by bike. But the traffic signal, obviously, but we probably have all used traffic signals before, so everybody kind of has an idea. What, what is involved with the traffic signal? If you're doing the same movement, you, you hang out here, you push the button, you wait for your hand, right? So you have a lot more waiting involved. Then when the hand comes, or the, or when the lock sign comes up, uh, then you start crossing, right? You cross to the other side. Kind of, one thing with that is that you're kind of at the mercy of drivers who are, uh, you know, trying to turn left or right onto that same space that you're trying to traverse at the same time. I know I've crossed a signalled intersection and some person has not been paying attention, who is particularly driving left or turning left kind of across you as you're crossing that intersection. So technically, you have the right of way when the lock sign comes up, but you also still have to be looking for vehicles. And because of vehicles going a little faster, that, that crash can be a little more severe. Kind of a, a similar for vehicles. Um, uh, the, the crash patterns that we have right now, uh, out there, you know, the signalled intersections tend to lead to crashes, like left-turning crashes. So if somebody's turning left and somebody's oncoming, you know, that left-turn person crashes with, uh, with the person coming straight because somebody failed to yield the right of way, that kind of thing. You also get right-angle crashes, so if somebody runs a red light and T-bones somebody, that can be very, very bad, right? And that happens sometimes at signalled intersections. We have seen that in, in our existing crash data out there, uh, for some of those intersections. The roundabouts for people driving, uh, it, because of the geometry of the roundabouts, again, people have to slow down. They are just looking again, that one direction to the people to their left to get into the roundabout. And if, if somebody happens to blow through that yield sign and somebody's in the roundabout, if there is a crash, it's typically a lot less severe because of the angle and the speed involved with, uh, with that. And so there's plenty of studies I can dig up and, and give to you guys about those things. But in my professional opinion, I believe the roundabouts will be safer for everybody involved.
Dean, one more, one more clarifying question if I could.
Yep.
What, width of sidewalks? What's, you know, if we all, many of us have been on the, the sidewalk, um, passing or crossing Hagan Bridge to date, how much wider would it be going forward with both, um, options, um, one and two?
Yep. Uh, so for option one, uh, I believe they have drawn in, and I didn't even, uh, introduce our consultants, they're hanging out on the call here tonight in case we have a question for them. But, uh, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that is drawn in at twelve feet wide. Right now, for reference, the sidewalk is about four feet wide, so, you know, we'd be tripling the size of what's out there right now. Um, the roundabout, because of how the bridge flares for that option, that the, the pedestrian space actually kind of flares also. It goes from twelve feet wide at the narrowest to actually more than that at the widest, just because of how the bridge layout works out. So it would be a little bit wider in the roundabout option. Does that answer your question, Sarah?
That sure does. Thank you.
Thank you.
So something that you didn't bring up is that with the roundabout, we wouldn't have people rushing to get through a yellow light.
Corrects, yep.
Which would be a, a big improvement to the safety issue there.
Yep.
So Sarah, have you, do you have a preferred option?
Um, you know, I'd like to fault the people, to my, um, fellow, um, council members who represent that district. And, you know, certainly, um, am amenable to exploring all three ideas or narrowing it down. Um, I, I do think the DNR constraints are something to consider and also, um, the environmental impacts. And one of the concerns I've had about that, um, third bridge, although it's intriguing and super creative and out-of-the-box thinking, when I think about, uh, sustainable development, that definition is taking care of the needs of the present without harming the needs for, without harming future needs. So I have some concerns about, you know, knowing what infrastructure looks for us, like for us today, um, and knowing that we're trying to get caught up, up on things in the past and concerned, um, creating another bridge for us to take care of. Um, are we, you know, how's that going to work out for future residents? So, um, just another thing to think about.
So again, I'm not shutting the door on three, it's laid on the table. So it could be pulled at any time.
Just wanted to, Joyce, what are you thinking?
I'm, I'm leaning towards, well, okay, so I, I agree with Sarah with safety and walkability for, and bicycling. Um, and Dean is very clear that option two is the, the safest option, which I'm leaning towards. Um, you know, no matter what we, we choose, we're going to have some very unhappy residents, so, um, we're going to have, so we, we each have to make a decision based on what we think is the most important part. And I think Sarah brought up some, um, good points. The, um, we're going to have the maintenance for option three. And, um, that, that could add to our budget significantly. Um, that might be something that would be helpful for us to get information on would be, you know, what would the cost of maintaining that bridge be? Um, because we would have to, we would have to, um, maintain it, but also, you know, how long would it last and when would we have to replace it?
Maybe if I could put my consultants on the spot for a second here. And I, I thought I saw Joe and Zach on the call, uh, here tonight. Do you have any initial gut reactions to, to council member Hall's thought there, question?
Hey Dean, this is Zach. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
So I actually didn't hear any of what the question was. It kind of like broke up for a minute there. Could you repeat the question?
Should I repeat it just in case? Okay. So the question was with, uh, with option three, the adding the new bridge to the west. What, uh, what, what maintenance, uh, obligations might we be getting ourselves into if you have any sort of dollar amounts or that kind of thing? And how long would a new bridge last? Uh, and essentially, what would our obligations be in the future? Uh, do you have any sense of that?
Sure. Well, I, I can't speak directly to like an annual maintenance cost. Um, I don't know if Mike Muraz would be able to answer that. But the bridge life itself is in the range of seventy-five to a hundred years. Um, you know, I guess you could kind of look back at the Eleventh Street Bridge, um, and the history of that, maybe checking with DOT about the maintenance that's gone into that bridge. Um, I know that it's got a pretty high efficiency rating right, right now, and I think that that bridge is in the fifty-year range in terms of age. So that might be a good benchmark. But I can't speak to the annual maintenance cost. We could, we could check in with Keith on that and get back to the group though.
Yeah. Um, thanks Zach. Couple of things, uh, when we did talk with, with Stott earlier, like when we first had this option as an option, like we asked them, first of all, can we build this? Second of all, are you going to make us like take on this bridge in the future? And they indicated that, we don't have this in writing, so take this for what it's worth, but they had indicated that they would be interested in owning the bridge in the future, minus potentially if there was some aesthetic, you know, uh, things that we put on the bridge, like they'd probably make us maintain kind of beyond the basics, if that makes sense. But the, you know, structural and, and that kind of stuff, uh, with that, hadn't indicated that they would make us, uh, take that on into the future. Generally, bridges over state highways and interstates are West Dot's to take care of. It's a little bit of, um, uh, you know, if there, it, if there ends up being some sort of liability issue, I think sometimes they, uh, would like the same person to, you know, own top and bottom, just so it's very clear if something came up, like who's responsible, you know, that kind of thing. So that, that's just my very, very basic understanding of why it makes more sense for them to own it. But, uh, uh, also talking with them, you know, we're kind of looking at for option one and option two would be one bigger bridge versus option three would be two smaller bridges. You know, for the future for them, like they, they seem to think that maintaining two smaller bridges was approximately the same cost as maintaining one bigger bridge. You know, there might be a little bit more involved with two bridges versus one, but it wasn't outside the, the realm of possibility that they would be, you know. They didn't tell us, absolutely not, we're not going to take care of this in the future, so make sure you think about that when, when you talk about this stuff, so.
I, you know, from my perspective on the DOT, I say this, I don't trust the thing they say. Haven't you?
I can understand why you would say.
And, and, and the, probably, and the biggest reason is that you're not going to get the same answer from them. So that answer is going to change with administrations. That answer is going to change based upon how much money they have available to them to, to be doing projects. And we know infrastructure-wise, not just here, I'm not talking about, about
Yep, no, I know where you're going with this.
But statewide, the, the problems that they have with infrastructure means, in my opinion, they're probably going to be putting the onus more and more on local units. Uh, unless they come up with some way to be able to fund all this stuff that the projects that they have ahead of them. A good point in case, case in point, rather, is, uh, the interchange over here at Carmichael where four or five years ago, uh, they were, they were going to, they were planning on doing this, and now all of a sudden it's not until twenty forty or twenty fifty. So, um, you, I, I just, just a word of caution. I wouldn't, I wouldn't put too much emphasis on what they may have said as far as an obligation to maintain a bridge or declare it. That's theirs once it's built. So, it's just my take on that.
So Rich, what is your opinion? Which of the options do you think is the even?
You know, I, I lean toward one right now, and it's just a lean, but I, I look at, I, I look at the roundabouts, and I like roundabouts, okay? Uh, but I don't like roundabouts that are shoehorned in to a tight space like this. If we had a two, three, four lane roundabout, I'm all over that. I think those are great, and I think those are a lot safer. And my opinion on a roundabout like this is that the severity of the accidents might be less. But I'm not convinced that the incidence of accidents is going to be less than option one. And in fact, I, I, it would be my opinion that we might have more accidents, just not as severe. And I think those people, you and I kind of had an exchange at the last meeting on this, Dean, where, you know, you've got people that are focused on making, making their turn around the roundabout, and all of a sudden you got the people coming in from the right side, and these guys over here aren't watching, and, uh, people don't yield. And so I, I'm not convinced that the roundabout is actually a safer option personally.
Can I ask you a question for, were you done, Joyce?
Yeah.
So this is for Dean or Zach is still on, right?
Yep.
Okay, so Zach and Dean. So my question is, is I look at option one, okay? It has five lanes. It kind of switches halfway over the bridge. If I look at option two, it has, from what I see, three lanes and kind of that thicker, um, pedestrian bike thing. So my question is, how can, when we saw the traffic studies, they were basically like the same. How can three lanes handle the same volume of traffic as five lanes?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, Zach can chime in on this, but it's, uh, my understanding is that because roundabouts operate in free flow, or, you know, if they're operating correctly, they're operating in free flow, right? So that means that, you know, if you, if you come up to a roundabout, you might have to wait, you know, for one car, maybe two, you know, to get into the roundabout, and then it's your turn, that kind of thing, right? Uh, then you go to the next one, same thing, you know, one or two cars, depending on, you know, what's going on in the roundabout, that kind of thing, and then you proceed, right? Uh, traffic signals because you're, you're stopping, you know, one, two legs of the intersection at a time. And actually, you're stopping potentially the other movements on the one, the legs that are going at a time, you know. You, you're, you can only give a green light to so many people at once with a traffic signal, right? Um, you need more lanes to provide the, the storage space for vehicles that are waiting to take their turn for a traffic signal. And generally, it takes longer for them to, to get through because you have to provide that green time to every movement, you know. Stop, stop the northbound through to let the eastbound through, go through there. Stop the southbound through, let the northbound left go, you know, that kind of thing. It's just a kind of a space thing, uh, to make sure that all the, all the vehicles are queued correctly and they don't back up, essentially because of the inefficiency of how a traffic signal operates compared to a roundabout. Zach, do you have any other thoughts on that? And I think Joe's on tonight too, so he can chime in too.
Yeah, I, that's a very good explanation. I think if you want to really dive into it, Joe could probably provide a better response than myself. Um, just for each, for everybody's benefit, I'm not a traffic engineer, but Joe Urban with our firm is, and he's on the call too, so.
Yeah, I can, uh, I could chime in real quick here. I think, you know, Dean, you had good points on explaining the difference between the signal on the roundabout. When we think about the Crestview intersection in particular, um, you know, the afternoon peak is busiest. And the movements that we see as the heaviest there are the westbound right turn to head north on Hagan Street, and the southbound left turn to head from Hagan to Crestview Drive. So if you look at the roundabout alternative, those two traffic streams never come in conflict with each other. So, you know, you don't, it's not like a signal where you have to share your green time with heavy movements. Um, so that's, I mean, that's one of the pretty, I guess, apparent trends when you get into the details of the traffic volume. the details of the traffic volumes.
Can I, Joe, can I ask a follow-up question? We talked about this in our last meeting, but what if there was a roundabout just on the south, if it was on the south side, on the Crestview side, and it was a traffic signal on the north side? How would that affect the traffic flow?
How many lanes?
Yeah, roundabout on the south.
Roundabout on the south on Crestview, but, so if it was like an option one, but then on the south side, you had a roundabout instead of a signal.
Yeah, you know, the, I think, if you look at the north, with the traffic signal in, in order to get acceptable operations and really get that northbound right to work the way we needed to, you need to have three lanes approaching Cooley Road. And you'd have to expand out those three lanes pretty quickly after the roundabout, if you kind of intertwined the two.
Yeah. Well, that's another question I have is, I don't see a real need for three lanes going south on option one, because we just heard from a number of the neighbors here from Crestview, why would there need to be a right, you know, lane there? Couldn't there just be two lanes heading south, and couldn't, couldn't that just be three lanes completely going north on the bridge?
Who are you asking them?
Um, whoever knows the answer. I'd say no. Well, I mean, the designers or Dean, I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit, not quite understanding why we'd have, have to have three complete lanes heading south onto Crestview when there's really just that, kind of that neighborhood down there.
Yeah, so, so, the, coming south across the bridge, there's three lanes, right? Two of those lanes are turning left because of that heavy left turn traffic movement, and the rightmost lane is going through or right. So, really, that accommodates that really heavy, you know, if you're going to Walmart from, you know, the north side of the bridge or whatever, that kind of traffic movement. And my guess is that that movement is, is kind of controls the operations of that traffic signal, and maybe Joe can confirm or deny that.
Yep, you're correct there, Dean.
Did you say I was correct, that kind of cut out?
Yeah.
Oh, yep, you're right.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
So, quickly, Paul's throwing soft, curveballs, I'm going to throw a fastball at that. What, have we given any thought to having just a pedestrian bridge? What's the incurred cost and strictly, strictly cut out any pedestrian crossings on the bridge? So, you put one on the east or the west side, probably the west, because it would hook up with the sidewalks. Just a pedestrian bike and walking path.
Uh...
And if we reduce the cost of what it would cost to put the sidewalks on the bridge now, I mean, does it?
Are you talking about if we weren't rebuilding?
No, we'd, we'd address the bridge for flow of traffic need.
Okay.
Take completely any pedestrian crossing off the bridge and just strictly have a pedestrian crossing bridge.
Okay, so you'd have a separate pedestrian crossing on the, on the west side of the bridge.
What additional cost would that, if any, within what you've budgeted already?
Sure. I'll ask for backup on this one, but I'm going to just spitball here. I believe that would be more expensive because if you, if you take that, that pedestrian movement and put it on its own bridge, it's, right now, if it's on the exist, or the reconstructed bridge, you only need that tall railing on one side of the bridge, right? You don't need it on the other side. You might have like a little short railing or something like that. But if you, if you pulled the, the, put it on its own bridge, you'd have, you know, railings on either side of the bridge, plus you'd have, have to have that railing on the vehicle bridge as well. So, you're essentially adding a cost of two big railings to make that happen.
I'm just, I'm just showing that they do it in the cities when they have incidents of safety and tragedy.
Yeah.
It's, it's a caged walking.
Yeah. Well, I think you might be thinking of like in Woodbury at Radio Drive.
Wherever.
Yeah, so Washington County did that, I think, last year or the year before. They added a crossing on its own next to the existing bridge. They didn't rebuild the, the bridge, the vehicle bridge. They, I think they, what you said, took off the, what was on there for a sidewalk or something like that, and put it, an expanded path on its own bridge, that kind of thing.
Well, so we could...
It was a little bit of a retrofit.
We could potentially just lower the cost of maintenance and maintain it.
They did that in St. Paul, Minneapolis, too, across 94.
And maintain the bridge, clean it up, cut out any foot or bike, put the other bridge up.
Yeah.
If you're already rebuilding the bridge, I think that having two separate bridges would be more expensive.
As I recall...
If you weren't going to rebuild the bridge, then, and you want to do something as like, try to get us through for a little bit, that could be an option to take off the existing sidewalk, put a pedestrian bicycle bridge off to the side, and somehow try to repurpose that space for maybe try to squeeze another lane on the bridge or something like that.
As I recall, Dean, and, and I, I think I recall this, the way I recall it, in St. Paul, I think it was like right around Hamlin, Lexington, in there, when they put that walking bridge across freeway?
Okay.
They did that while they were redoing the bridges, if I remember that correctly.
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm thinking in the same place you are, they, I think they redected a bunch of those bridges. I don't think they, you know, built them all the way down to the piers or whatnot, but I think, I think they redected them. If I recall correctly, they, they kind of added some crossings across 94, kind of between the interchanges, so to speak.
But I think they took it off the bridges. I think they took it off of the, off the, or the road bridges.
I think, I'll have to look again, but I think that they still, there is still a sidewalk across that.
I don't know that that's important, but I think that that's something that we could consider. All right, we got a motion right now, and the motion is to, at least for, for the point, for the time being, to put option three on the table and focus on options one and two going forward, unless we hear something that would compel us to bring the option three back on the table at the next meeting. Is that right, Randy?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good? All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, nay.
All right, motion is approved. So, I mean, all that means is that option three is just put on the table, so it can be brought back. All right, what's next? Paul, you had talked about just holding off until next, next week and due diligence. Any conversation on that? Is that a motion?
Do we need to motion to not make a decision?
No, we don't, but.
I, I'd like to see some more numbers or a different plan to kind of what we've talked about, a pedestrian maybe, or just give us a number or something? I don't know if that's enough time for you?
We can, yeah, we can see what we can do for, a week from now, we should be able to get some stuff together for you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody? Any other numbers or anything? Any other information you need?
No.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion, second to adjourn. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, stand adjourned. And I want to thank everybody, audience, thank you guys for being here. Anybody on Zoom, thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you here next Monday.